Good evening. I would like to call to order tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call information posted on our website. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. East Hemphill Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign our guest log for meaning-minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure outlined online. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All comments should be directed to the board. And we will now move on to our first agenda item. I would ask that you join me by rising for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first, we have our consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of routine items that require very little debate or discussion. Is there any comment from the board on the consent agenda?
No. I'll be abstaining from the first part.
Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Item A invoices as presented. Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four to zero with one abstention. Mr. Russell abstaining. And I forgot to mention that we have Mr. Brubaker supervisor attending online via Zoom. Motion to approve consent agenda items B through C as presented. Okay, motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, action items. We have the 2025 special events.
So we have four special events that have been submitted so far for the year. They're listed on your agenda. The first is Penn Legacy PA Classics, which is our regional soccer rec group. They have submitted an application for the use of Amos Her Park and traffic control provision on Junction Road, Lititz Road, Greystone Road, and Landisville Road for soccer tournaments, which will be held across Lancaster County from March 2025 to December 2025. This is a recurring event. In past years, we have provided assistance in the way areas of mowing restroom facilities and use of our traffic control devices. Penn Legacy continues to notify the neighborhood residents when the events are going on, excuse me, and utilizes constables for traffic control. It would be staff's recommendation that the board approve Penn Legacy Soccer Club's application to utilize the park and provide traffic control with constables on Junction, Lititz, Greystone, and Landisville Roads for soccer tournaments to be held across Lancaster County during the months of March through December of 2025, and permit the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the dates and roadways that has been provided. Do you want me to go through all four, or do you want to do them one at a time?
No, I just think if we highlight what they are.
Okay. The second event is the Vagabonds Annual Car Show. This is an event that was previously held at East Petersburg Community Park. However, they have significantly outgrown that space. This was discussed with the Park and Rec Committee, and because there have been no issues with the event in the past, the Park and Rec Committee suggested that we move forward with discussions. The Vagabonds are excited about coming to our park. The plans are in place, and they have submitted an application to utilize the park on May 3rd with a rain date of May 4th. They ask for assistance with mowing restroom facilities, trash cans, and our traffic control devices, and will notify the neighbors of the event. Both myself and Chief Kotmeyer have worked with this group for many years, previously in the borough, and are excited to see the event come to Amos Her Park. The third event that has submitted a request for a special event is the Men of Iron 5K. This is done in association with WJTL and the Junction Center at Landis Hall, and it would be held on Junction Road on Saturday, March 15th, 2025, rain or shine. The roadway closure for this event would be Junction Road between Landisville and Auction Road from 8:45 to 10:15. The Junction Center recurrently holds 5Ks, and they work with us very well for that 90-minute closure. It has not ever created any significant traffic control issues, and we do notify Norfolk Southern of these events ahead of time. They have submitted all the necessary insurances, and so staff would recommend that the board approve the Men of Iron 5K on Saturday, March 15th, and permit the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement for that event. The final event is Align Life Ministries 5K, held on the same section of roadway on Saturday, May 10th, also rain or shine. Closure for this 5K is the same as the previous, closure of Junction Road between Landisville and Auction. Again, Norfolk Southern Railroad stoppage is requested, and their traffic control personnel are typically constables or fire police. So staff would recommend that the board also approve Align Life Ministries' request to hold their 5K on Junction Road on May 10th and sign that indemnification agreement as well.
Any comment from the board? Any concerns? No? Any comment or concerns to the audience? Ma'am, could you come to the microphone for our meeting minutes? If you could just say your name and... Sorry.
Question.
You can turn it down.
I just have a question. I'm new to this. Is there a fee for the use of the facilities at the park?
Yes, we have a special event fee and also a reservation fee for the pavilion and other portions of the park, and it is a sliding scale. It's on our township fee schedule. Could you please just sign in on the sign-in sheet so we can document that you... who you were when you asked the question for the minutes? Thank you very much.
Do we have any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from anyone on Zoom? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the following 2025 events that were presented? Penn Legacy PA Classics, 2025 soccer events, Men of Iron 5K Junction Center for March 15th, 2025, the Vagabonds Car Show at Amos Her Park on May 3rd, 2025, and Align Life Ministries 5K for May 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Okay. Want to say a motion for Mr. Johnson, a second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the yard waste agreement with Columbia Borough.
So we've used Columbia Waste Disposal Facility for quite a number of years, probably since it's been in existence. They have increased their rates by $5, so instead of 35, we're paying $40 a ton, and this is a 2025 agreement.
Any questions or concerns?
Just so they don't go away.
Yes, exactly.
I note that's a 10% increase, correct?
Yes, five.
More than 10. But it's $5 a ton, 5 on 35.
Okay.
The yard waste, is that... Is that the yard waste that's picked up by East Hemphill? I mean, it's not the Casella yard waste, is it? It's that too. It's all yard waste.
Yes.
Like, that comes in those paper bags?
Yes, everything in the paper, disposables, yeah. Recyclables.
And I should know this, but I've never put any out. So does that... When people put those paper bags out, does Casella pick that up? And then they... Casella brings it to Columbia as well as East Hemphill does when they pick up the leaves?
Our leaves don't go to Columbia. Our leaves go to Stoner Farm. It's closer.
Oh, okay. All right, so this is just the Casella...
Just yard waste in bags, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the 2025 Columbia Borough Yard Waste Agreement at $40 a ton?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Brubaker, second for Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have old business discussion of board goals, and our packet was our 2024 goals and some 2025, looks like redlined, items. So just want to have a discussion here about board goals. I had a couple of things I wanted to throw on here and just want to open it up for discussion. If everybody's had a chance to take a look at it, if there's anything that you want to add or want to see added to a specific group. I know I was talking to Mr. Brubaker today, and he had a pretty good idea about something, and I'll let him speak to that. So, Mr. Brubaker, if you want to maybe start off? I think you're on mute.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Thanks, Mr. Wigglesworth. Yeah, just going down through the list, it's not a... It's not a group that I serve on, but I... It just jumped out at me here on the... In the Parks and Recreation area. Two things for me, continuing to seek new trail opportunities in interconnection of existing trail systems with improvements, incorporating parkland golf course and stream buffers. I would just highly agree with that item, and I think with some of the things we're working on through the Noldorra Park and the greenways that are coming over from Merritt Avenue, you know, across Harrisford Pike, et cetera, seems to be... Seems to be, for me anyway, it's exciting how many different trails that we're starting to see, and it'd be great if we could just keep working toward interconnecting those trails, just to make an extended system of multi-use trails. I think that'd be a great plus for the township. The other item, the other item that I noted was we've had some discussion from time to time, and we've had some movement on our Knoll Road Church Street property for a development of park and recreation activities and facilities. And I was just going to throw out the idea that maybe it's soon time to think about naming this area, and how we might go about doing that certainly is up for discussion. But one of my thoughts was, when I was involved with my company and Hemphill School District, they... We had a very, I thought it was a very good corporate sponsorship program that was helpful to the school district to help fund, give a little more money toward the sports programs there, and also created a connection between, you know, the community, the community businesses, and the school district. So I just thought I'd throw it out there as a... Something to discuss at a future date or think about in the meantime was what we might do to create a name for this park and how, what process we might go through to get there.
But I like both of those. I think the interconnection with the trails would probably go under the planning and development portion of things. Group for our board this year, for future boards, and I think that's a great idea how what, in the future, how we can connect these trails and walking paths as much as possible. And then the, you know, naming of the park and, you know, whether we look for a sponsor or sponsors, I thought that would be a great discussion point or something that the Park and Rec Committee could take a look at and, you know, come up with, you know, an idea of how to move forward with that and, you know, what best practices are as far as, you know, getting sponsors and how that would look. So I think that was a worthy idea.
I think they're great suggestions. You going to move the trail issue to planning and development? Take it away from here?
I don't need to take it away. I think both, it would serve both, but I think with planning and development, we should make it a priority.
Okay.
As well. So I would just add it to that. I don't think we need to take it away from Parks and Rec, but I think planning when we're making road improvements or we're making any type of new developments, if there's, you know, a trailhead or close proximity to a trail.
Mr. Bennett, could you pull your mic up closer, please?
That we take that into account.
Okay, and then, you know, I... Certainly Roger's comment about naming the park should come under some consideration. You know, I thought up until this point, we were going to try to, in some way, limit the amount of advertising or sponsorship in the park. We wanted organizations to sponsor things like fields and different aspects of the park. You know, I... If we want to... If we're going to revisit that, I think everybody needs to know that. For me, I'm of the opinion that I'd frankly like to see our board name the park, the five of us. I mean, that's why we're here on some level. I think that has some merit. I don't want to exclude the community, but we've all put in a lot of time and effort on this, and I think it's a just recognition of the time and effort that we put into this by allowing our group to decide on the ultimate name of the park. Okay? As it pertains to park and recreation goals and objectives, I've got a couple of comments. I can talk about them here, or we can wait. I like to, in some ways, reorder our priorities. I look at these as priorities for Parks and Rec. I think our most important priorities should be at the top of the list, and our, you know, the lesser priority should be at the bottom. I note that with number two, support the Hemphill Recreation Commission in their work to reduce the cost burden of providing sports activities for residents. On some level, in my view, that's a goal for the Hemphill Recreation Commission, to reduce the cost burden. You know, I'd like to see that moved and make number three the number two item on the list. Number six to be the third item on the list. Number seven, the number four item on the list. And five and six can stay on the...
Well, I tell you what, why don't we do this while... Like, we don't have to approve anything tonight. I thought just for tonight, we'd have like a thousand-foot discussion about it, and that we could... Those items, we could submit back in and maybe have Cindy take a stab at putting something comprehensive together that we can take a look at moving forward, and I'm fine with everything that you said there.
Okay. All right, I'll work up the list with... As a recommendation, and then we can talk about the next meeting or the next time we discuss it.
Got you. Yes. Yeah, and I like the idea of naming the park. We actually did talk about it a little bit at our last rec meeting, just for about five minutes, just to get that moving, so that's a good idea. On the Parks and Rec, I would just suggest that we refer to Hemphill Recreation Commission as like Hemphill, you know, H-A-R-C, just because when you look at that, it's sometimes... It's confusing with the rec authority. Two more things, though, is if we could forget. I'd like to suggest that the library topic goes into, I guess, the finance group, you know, as Roger had suggested, it's in the budget for this year, maybe. So it's definitely a topic that we need to determine how we're going to approach the library in the future. So I think that can go into finance, I suppose. And then also, we're going to be talking about the solicitation topic in public safety, so I just would like to add that as a goal, and that's it.
And I'm fine with those as... All those as well. Mr. Russell, did you have any right now that you wanted to add? I have a few here, I'm going to say.
Nah, I'm actually good with it. Anything, just the big picture to talk about, even though it's a finance goal, is I would like to start having on our agenda item, talking about fire and EMS funding on a regular basis, so this is not something that comes up in the fall. So I think we should have a report out, so we should be starting to plan having, maybe have an EMS presentation in the township, fire department presentation in the township about staffing and funding, and really start drilling down the numbers in a public discussion.
I'd support... I would support Scott in by adding, suggesting that perhaps we add to our agenda, formal agenda, a spot for public safety, fire and EMS, fire police and EMS.
And then we can talk about that in finance and drill that out a little bit more, but if it just be just something that, I mean, it's already a goal for finance, so it's not like... But I think it should be something that gets brought up on a regular basis at this point going forward.
So again, I think those are all important, and I think as we have been talking about for approximately six months, you know, our finances, and that there may come a point when we get into the budget later this year that we may have to consider a tax increase. But before we do do that, there was a couple of things I would like to do under the finance admin umbrella, so to speak, is, one, I think we should, you know, take an overall look through the finance and admin or administration committee and take a look at, you know, where we are with our finances. We're aware that we may have to consider a tax increase, but before we do entertain that, I think that we should do an overall review of our operation. We should take a look at everything, including staffing, workload, salary, benefits, all of that as well. I think we also need to take a look at the groups that we're donating to outside of our township. Number one, making sure that they're providing a service to our residents, make sure that it's being utilized, and that it has value for the residents in comparison to what we're paying for it, and, you know, also ensure that the entity in question is indeed in need of funding, and we should, you know, develop a review of that coming into the budget time period next fall. So, you know, I'd like to put that under the administrative group, and I think that sort of dovetails off of, you know, the library as well, take up that discussion at that point, and maybe instead of looking, you know, for them to come up with their guidelines or rules, maybe we come up with our own, and if it satisfies us, then we're... We can move forward with that. Also, I think the update or talking about fire services is important. I think that we're going to really need to drill down and take a look and try to come up with some hard numbers of what we've got going forward, so that we can present to the community some more firm numbers and have a good explanation for whatever decision we come to. So I think it would be important for public safety and finance to work together in those two groups to come up with a plan or a memo that can be released to the public around budget time, indicating just what those expenses are that the township is facing. Those are the things that I had and just wanted to do, again, really more about educating in reference to our finances going forward. I really don't want to spring onto the public tax increase if we actually have to do one at the last minute. So I'd rather that we prepare the community for it now. We've done a good job so far. We've not had any tax increases since 2008, and my hope is that we can continue that. But the fact is, we may not be able to, so we will see. But we should do our due diligence, and I think the taxpayers expect us to do our due diligence if we make a decision to increase taxes. Was there anything else regarding the... One other item I would just change, Public Safety Committee is going to be Johnson and Wigglesworth, and I think in our packet, it was still Wigglesworth and Brubaker, so we need to make that change. And then also, Mr. Brubaker will be on Traffic Commission, replacing Mr. Johnson, just so we make sure we make that in the township records.
Public safety is Brubaker and Johnson. No, Johnson. Okay, that's what's on the goals.
Public safety is Wigglesworth and Johnson.
That's what it should be.
Instead of Brubaker?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Okay, any comment from the audience on this discussion about board goals? It's more of a housekeeping item. We try to set priorities for the township, and you're just sort of listening into that kind of discussion. Okay. Hearing none. Our next item up for business is new business. The Bowman Group Traffic Engineer Report on Projects.
So I just wanted to go over a few things, just to get everyone up to date, the projects that the Bowman Company is working on. So the intersection of Route 72 and Lititz Road, I can tell you that the rights of way have been negotiated and should be in place shortly. We are planning on advertising this project in February. Should be a short turnaround, and we hope to have it on your agenda, probably beginning of April, to award the bid and then get started on it. It should be a fairly quick project, since we're using wooden poles, we don't have to wait for those to arrive. So that's moving forward finally.
And just to confirm, there is a mandatory pre-bid meeting, right?
There's a mandatory pre-bid, and there's a clause in there for topsoil to the property owner.
Thank you.
The other project they're working on is Harrisburg and Hemlock, those Harrisburg and Hemlock and Harrisburg and Good, there's that intersection of Signals. We need to do some updating. We are in the process of working through the PNDOT permitting process. Hopefully that takes a few months, and then we can get started on that project as well. We do have funding for that, so that, that should be moving forward. Under general land development, the only one I really want to mention is the project, Panatoni Project, which is the intersection of Routes 283 and Spooky Nook Road. That interchange will have signalized ramps. We haven't heard anything from Panatoni, but they are working with Bowman to submit the necessary paperwork to get that approved and started. So they are moving forward with that, but very slowly. I think their main focus was the warehouse first.
So is that, is that single permit plans at this point, or what's, where are they, what's the developer doing?
According to Mr. Bauer, the, the plans, the signalized plans, I think have been submitted. But they're not, just recently.
The, the single permit plans are into independent at this point?
I don't know that they are. I think they might still be with Bowman before they were submitted.
Okay.
It's really early stages.
Has Panatoni started construction on the warehouses yet?
The warehouse is in place.
The warehouse is in place already?
It's under roof. I'm not sure if it's, well, it's not operating because it can't, but it is under roof.
Was there some realigning to the off-ramps and the signals?
Yes.
There's a lot going on there.
And in addition to that, too, you'll see the Project 5 Holland Street Road, that's the new car dealerships that are going in there. They are going to be required to put a signal at South Chickies and Spooky Nook. That's further down the Pike, but they are required to do that, so that you'll be seeing as well. They did two capital plans for us. We did have a bridge capital plan. They updated that plan. That was done in 2021, so now we have one in for 2025, which basically takes all our bridges and puts some pricing on it to determine, so that we can start tracking how much it's going to cost us down the road and what our needs will be for the bridge work. In addition to that, they've also done the traffic signals that we have. We have 42, 43 traffic signals, and they have looked at each one of them based on the permit and have, will be providing us a report of what some of those signaled intersections need. Some of our controller boxes are outdated, can't find parts. So he's going to have a comprehensive list for us and also, like the bridge report, is going to have suggested and prioritized improvements that need to be made. The Dairy Road Bridge, that's, a bridge is going to be replaced. We hope to start bidding that in the spring of 2025. And then the Church Street Bridge is, is a long-term bridge project that we need to start because it's the bridge over Amtrak, which will take many years to get completed. Bowman is currently working on a funding package that we can pitch to the county and to the PNDOT under the MPO process.
Sorry to be a pain, but what's the priority two on that one? What's, what's the driving factor right now with?
We're down to six-month reviews.
Okay.
The priority two, Perry, help me out, the priority two is the deck.
Uh, yeah, the deck is really in bad shape. There are some issues underneath with the, the, some of the substructure also, though we have patched the deck several times.
With the substructure, though, we still have some time to go through tip process at this point.
We do.
It's not a quick process.
We do.
So there's nothing critical on the substructure side, on the stuff that would fall down on the Amtrak train stuff?
No.
Okay, so it's more superstructure being the deck?
Yes.
Just, just because I don't know, funding, is there any federal funding that we could pursue or qualify for?
That's what we're talking about doing. This is anything over Amtrak, we seek federal funding for, because it's a pain in the butt.
Right, so we, we do, okay, so that's the good news. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that'll be followed through the county in that process.
I think we have, we may have a connection now with.
The county, the MPO looks pretty favorably on the Amtrak bridges because they recognize how difficult a process that is, and you really need PNDOT kind of leading the show for that, because Amtrak just doesn't listen to local government at all. So by doing the federal funding, we get PNDOT helping us out. And I did one look one time, and a Amtrak bridge is about four times as expensive to replace as a local bridge, same, all the other conditions are the same, just because you're going over top of the Amtrak. So that's, that's why we get a little special consideration for federal funding for the Amtrak projects, because they're very difficult. It's a very difficult entity to deal with.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, up next, we have public comment. Is there any here who would like to make some public comment? Okay, any online?
There's none online, I just.
Oh, is there somebody that wanted to speak? Sure, can you?
Could you, could you please give us your name and address, just so they know?
My first question is, is there an agenda for the people, the residents of Hemphill that we could follow?
Sure, right here on the.
So those are all the people that are attending via Zoom. Some of them are residents, some of them are township staff, one of them is the newspaper reporter.
This is open after the stay home and?
Yes. It's on the posted agenda, which is posted on the website.
I couldn't tell you, but you'd have to go on, I don't, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what they post for the meeting. WWW dot East Hemphill, or at easthemfield.org.
Dot East Hemphill. Dot org.
O R G. And if you scroll down, you'll see agendas and minutes.
If residents have a question to leave, send it to me.
So if you have a question tonight, you can ask it to us. A lot of times, you're more than welcome to interact with staff during the week and call in with your specific question. You'll get routed to the person who can best answer it for you. I mean, you can bring it up here, you're here now. What is it that you wanted to talk about? Sure. Right. You bet. So you could either do one of two things. You could bring it up tonight, whatever the issue is, and we would discuss it. And if it's something that needed further deliberation or investigation, we would either get back to you or put it on a future agenda to discuss again. Or you could go through staff, which probably be the most preferred option. That way, we can have a little homework done on it, and we're not presented with it blindly, and we can have some information when we discuss it here, so. Yes.
Diane's giving you some contacts. I'm the chief of police. Nice to meet you.
It just depends on what we're talking about. We had a pretty light agenda tonight. We didn't have a lot to discuss. Sometimes there's, you know, development or some improvements that will bring a lot of people out or discussion topic. Tonight, there really wasn't much on the agenda, so that's why there's not a lot of people here. And you can grab one of these agendas, just as a reminder. Anyone else? Okay, managers' report.
So Centerville Road, just want to reemphasize the fact that that roadway will be closed the weekend of March 7th to the 10th for the repairs to the railroad closing. We'll post it on our websites and, and in our, our news feeds as best we can to keep people apprised. And of course, I don't know that we've gotten the detour route yet.
Any way we can reach out to our L and P reporter?
Yes, yeah, PNDOT will actually do the news release since they're still running the project.
Right.
I also discussed with them putting up a message board. They're not sure if they can get that all approved through, through the project process, but that is their goal. The detour route is set and approved. It is Hempland Road over to Donerville and down to Columbia Avenue, in the same direction coming the other way.
Does Manor Township have a message board? Can we check with them and work with them, maybe on their end also, putting a message board up? And can we use ours as well, wherever you guys think it would be strategically best placed?
You want that in addition to PNDOT's?
Yes.
Or just if they don't, okay?
Yes.
All right.
I wouldn't necessarily count on PNDOT's process getting that in place in time.
Okay.
I was going to suggest.
I would assume theirs is going to be on 283, or excuse me, 30 somewhere.
It was actually set to be on Centerville Road to the north of the overpass and to the south of Old Tree.
Okay.
So that the traffic utilizing the area was the ones that was getting notified, but I'll follow up with that.
It will all get snowed in, and it won't be a big deal.
In addition to that, if you'll notice on your, your list, we are having problems with the railroad crossing gates. They are not functioning correctly. They had Norfolk Southern out there to take a look at it, and of course, with the repairs approaching, they are not anxious to make the repairs. So Diane's very, and very much in touch with the people at Norfolk Southern and PNDOT. So if there's a problem out there, she knows, knows about it right away and can react to it and keep the traffic flowing.
Are they just not actuating, or what's going on?
They're coming down.
Yeah, they're, they're remaining closed due to debris building up in the rail channels because of the deterioration of the pavement, and because it's getting replaced in a month, they're not interested in making any repairs to fix the problem.
So once they go down, they don't go back up?
Correct, once they're down, they don't go back up. It wasn't a problem until they started having four-hour ETAs to fix the gates, so, but.
And I guess there's nothing we can do to work in conjunction with them?
There's nothing that we can touch of that system to be able to have any impact.
Norfolk Southern is just one step below Amtrak, Scott.
No, no, I figured, I just thought I'd ask, okay.
The Church Adult Park, the survey has been completed, and they are now working on getting the MPDS permit submitted by the end of March. We're moving along there. The Recreation Authority has awarded a contract to cornerstone design for a cost of not to exceed $25,000. This will design and provide a cost estimate for a new pro shop and demolish the barn. The kickoff meeting, I think, is scheduled for sometime in February. The 2024 audit will be starting in mid-February. I'm hoping to have that done by June at the latest, see if we can better our, our timing over last year, which was October. Right-to-know requests, just wanted to make you aware, Diane is the right-to-know officer for the township, and the fact that we've had 110 in 2024, which is much higher than we've had in preceding years, which is about 50 to 70 inquiries per year. So it's escalating, she's handling it, and I did provide you with, with a general idea what, what types of things are submitted. We don't, certainly don't have any issues with the resident inquiring for record. It's a lot of times the commercial people that ask for information or settlement companies that ask for information on properties that makes it difficult.
So for those type of commercial uses, are we able to bill for our time?
No.
Okay.
And is there a reason that you can put your finger on for why it's increasing recently?
I would say there is more, there are more requests for information on controversial topics and/or activities. In addition to that, there is a significant increase in the number of environmental studies that are done through the real estate process, to the point that we're getting three and four different companies requesting the same information or very similar information on the same property, when it appears that they're going to change the use or sell or do some type of development. Those are the primary increases that I see coming through, and those, those environmental studies are, are rather frustrating when you're, when you're seeing the same address three and four times over the course of three weeks.
Yeah, th- those are the ones that I feel should be, our time should be covered, not, not, not as citizens' request, but that's nothing, not something we can fix here, so.
Correct. It's being considered at the state level, but see what happens.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, one more on that. Like, are there requests for, you know, just like resi, well, in some cases, I suppose it's residents, but in other cases, is it for like businesses trying to get more business, or is it like legal questions or?
It runs the gamut from just about anything you could think of. We get requests for police accident reports, we get requests for investigative and non-investig- or criminal and non-criminal investigative records, we get requests from law firms who have active cases and some who are searching for fodder for cases. We get requests from citizens for their building plans from their home, if someone's bought a new home. We get requests from commercial companies who are doing, who are selling databases of vendor information or solar information. We get requests from businesses who want to add to their mailing lists, and we deny the ones that, that can and should be denied, and the others, we answer based on how the right-to-know law is written. And when we don't know for sure, then we reach out to the solicitor for, for her input on it.
In '24, it did look like the bulk of them were business service type of arrangements, people looking for solar, some information on solar. You know, I only saw one controversial. Item on the, on the list that for 2024. I'm sure from a document production standpoint, that was probably the, the most work, but it does seem like when people are poking around for information relating to, you know, solar utilities, those, just looking, looking for numbers, we should be able, and I hear you saying we can't, we should be able to charge them for it, because it's not, in my view, it's not. A right-to-know issue. I mean, I guess it is, but it just doesn't seem like it's a good one, if you will.
So some of those we're able to deny because the record doesn't exist and we're not required to create one? So that solar is a, is a primary example of that. The system that we use to process permits and land development plans does not have a, a report or a process within the system that we can separate that out. And so we are able to deny that request based on the fact that we don't have a record that lists the information they're looking for. But we have a similar one that looks for, for vendors and invoices, and we actually have a report in our financial software that is specifically created for that purpose. So it just depends on what. So it just depends on what the request is for, and, and some of them don't take long at all. And, you know, it allows us to be transparent and to give information that's available. But there are certainly those times when it's, it's.
A lot of work for you guys.
It is, and, and it should be noted that Lieutenant Polley in the Police Department manages their right-to-know process under me. So when I receive requests that have to be processed through the Police Department, he's processing that with their record staff and, and with Jen. So it's not just my time, it's also then Planning Department looking it up, the Police Department looking it up, and so on. So it, it takes time. But it's the law we have, and maybe, maybe PSATs can fix it in the future.
I mean, you layer, you know, the costs involved with your effort, and then on top of that, overlay that with Lieutenant Polley, which is substantial, you know, that's a big cost.
So if we, since we can provide this stuff to PSATs, do we actually have the piece of data of who's making the request? Because you can then put down, you can see the, it pops at the commercial. Plus, I kind of like to see if there's a repeat vendors, both either commercial or for residents. So, and I don't mind it being a public document showing who the repeat vendors are.
Yeah, I don't, I can't come up with any residents that are repeat requesters.
No, but now, now would be the time to put something like that in place before we have a resident who's a repeat requester, because we're not then, we're not targeting that person, we've already had the policy in place. But it'd be nice to be able to see names on here.
And I purposely took them off, but I can certainly provide you the.
Because he can afford, we can actually forward that to PSATs, because they're actually looking for another call again, because they're trying to push the commercial stuff again at the state level.
Okay.
So we are, or have been working on a community information mailer. This is everything we approved in 2023. The company that we're using went out and got advertising, and this will be hopefully published by sometime this spring. Diane and our receptionist have been working quite a lot on the interior of the, of the project to explain the details and the nuances of the township. This is different than the newsletter. This will have a community map with streets grids, so that new residents or existing residents can find a street, should they need to, to look for something. There's no cost to the township, it's being paid by the advertisers. So it's a good project, and hopefully it'll be in the mail soon. Vacancies, we have two vacancies currently. The Planning Commission has one vacancy and the Recreation Authority has one vacancy. Mr. Doug Rhodes is the recommendation from the Recreation Authority. If there's no objections, we'll put him on the agenda for next meeting and consider him for appointment. He's replacing Doug Brubaker. And then we have Stacy Reidenbach, which is the recommendation from the Planning Commission, and that's being reviewed by the Planning Group. And we'll have a, hopefully, a recommendation by next meeting.
If I could also comment on that, you know, when we made the approval on the hiring of Cornerstone, we did it on a, on a vote of four to zero. So it's, it's important that we have Doug approved for our, for our next meeting at the end of the month. I'd appreciate the board's action on that, if possible.
So are you, are you okay if we do it at the next meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, we're good. Next meeting is good, and we have time.
So the 2025 roadwork is currently being advertised. We've got a pre-bid meeting coming up. And we hope to have the request for award at your next meet, or the March meeting. The primary roadways are in the Wheatland Hills area. We're concentrating our efforts on that development. We talked about Bor Gold's, Stone Water Projects, the Nissly Basins. They're going to be returning in the spring and complete those plantings, and that project should then be closed out. The other thing I wanted to mention, the Harrisburg Pike Drainage Project, we have been trying to find a grant funding for that. We've been turned down now for the second or third one. So we'll continue to look for it. This is a $500,000 project that the township might have to take on themselves if we can't find any funding that's interested in looking at that. We did have a couple of meetings and group reports. The planning group met and discussed the commission vacancies, what they discussed potential developments, and assigned policy to handle signage on fencing. The Public Works also met. We talked about the Amtrak and the Amos Her fencing. The potential of actually putting fencing along the trail system, along the, the Amtrak line to the east side of the Amos Her Park. We've determined that it's feasible. It's going to take about 2,000 feet of fence and a couple of signs. Perry feels that we can accomplish that for $105,000. So it's something that hopefully the town, the board supervisors has no problem with, and we can move forward to do that. I can tell you that the no trespassing signage behind the Amos Her House has been placed. There are eight no trespassing signs back there on the township property. Yeah. The Parks and Rec also met. We reviewed and discussed a vegetative management plan for the Noel Doorwood Park. We went into partnership with Lakswama to do this project. It was very minimal cost for the township. Lakswama paid most of the project. The what it does, it provides the township with how to prioritize and, and manage the invasive plantings on both properties, and which one should be removed first, and the process of what they should be replaced with. We're working with Lakswama, and we're also going to be pulling in the Blue Green Corridor project because the Blue Green is going to be doing work on Lakswama's property on that trail system. Moving forward, it will help the township when we actually break ground for Noel Doorwood. We can tell the residents that we've looked at the vegetation, because that is a very sensitive area to birders and naturalists. They're very concerned that we, when we disrupt that area, that we put it in place, that's going to encourage the, the birding to continue. So.
Staff did a great job with the exciting and informative presentation, vegetation management. I mean, it's, it does make you smile a little bit, but, but it isn't, I came away feeling that, that it's very important for the, for the township and for the residents. And there's a great coordination between the three organizations that are involved in this, and I want to thank them all.
And that concludes my report, unless there's questions.
I'd like to make a comment on the, on the fencing issue, okay? And I'm probably in the minority on this, but I've lived in this township for more than 50 years. And to my knowledge, there's been two deaths associated with, with the train situation out there. I'm not sure that it's necessary for fencing to be put up. I don't think, at the end of the day, whether we put up fencing or not, is going to make it any less safe or more safe, I should, I guess I should say. I just think it's an expense that right now, given the occurrence, and I, I'm sensitive to the occurrence that just happened with the young lady. But, you know, it's, it's like, it's like accidents. There, it's, it's an outlier, and I don't think on some level that we should be making a decision about an expense, given, again, our financial situation on an outlier, outlier situation. Okay.
A question about that fence. 2,000 feet and $5,000. I was just curious what kind of fence?
You have a picture of it in your, in the manager's report. It's the same type of material that's being used along the PennDOT highways?
It's called right-of-way fencing.
Is that what it is?
I see. About five feet.
Can't fix stupid.
Yes, that's what it looks like. Well, I stand by our recommendation, because we, we did make improvements down there and that weren't there 50 years ago. So with the trail, that's right up against it now. I just think it'd be prudent to put something along there.
And I guess now, having seen the fence and what you're going to put up.
I tell you what, why don't we? Yeah, why don't we consider it and we can regroup with that next time?
Or, or we can do it. Are we going to do it? We can't take action tonight?
It's not on the agenda, it's.
Okay. Having seen, having seen the type of fence we're using, I. Okay.
Is there anything else? Did you have anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe our visitors in the back were wondering where we're, where we're talking about.
Um, do you want to?
There is a, the map is in.
Sure, I can put that up.
So it's on the east side of the park, which is over this way, where we have our trail system now with the wetlands. And what we were thinking about doing while she gets this up is taking that fence from the Amtrak, what I call a shack, the control box, and taking it towards the township building through the woods behind Amos Her House to the fence that currently exists on the campus. It's certainly not a fence that will keep people out. It's really a deterrent to make you aware that there's something on the other side that you should not be bothering with. The fence plus the signage should alert people that there's an active rail line there.
Are you pulling up a map? Is that what you're?
The two offshoots there at the, at the driveway is the gated area that Amtrak does use to access their control box, which is up there at the corner.
Does having a deterrent like that have any impact in a positive way with like insurance claims possibly, or?
Probably not.
Okay.
Okay. All good? All right, do we have any other? For the good of the order, any other items to discuss tonight? From the board?
Mr. Chairman, just to announce the exact session.
Very good. So we will be adjourning, we're going to head into executive session to discuss, if I'm not mistaken, employee matter and illegal matter?
Yes.
And we will not return. So, thank you and good evening.